Okay, Stuart.
Thanks, Convenor. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to the council. My name's Stuart Fairweather. I'm Chair of Dundee Trade Union Council and I'm a unit rep at the City Council. I represent unit members in the City Council and in leisure and culture. I'm allowed to speak today for a number of reasons. Principal amongst them is the fact that members of Dundee City Council staff, members of leisure culture staff, read about the discussions and the proposals for this meeting in the press. Headlines at an early stage, but in the last few days, people have heard about their jobs prior to being notified about what is likely to happen today. And it's imperative that I share that concern with you. I guess the concern that those individuals directly involved felt stood alongside citizens across Dundee. Those in Charleston that heard that their library and our community centre might go, those in Stobswell that heard about Arthurstone Library. So the precursor to this meeting for staff and citizens has been one of concern. Councillor Sawyer has alluded to the fact that I've been at many of these meetings. That indeed is a fact. And for more than 10 years, we've talked about the need for a needs-led budget, one predicated on the needs of the city and addressing then quality in the city, and one that doesn't hand on the cuts, whether those be cuts from Westminster or the Scottish Parliament to the people of Dundee. And the graph in your documentation indicates that there's been millions of cuts, 190 million cuts if my assessment's right. And adding 24 million on top of that isn't going to help. So that again is why we're here today. We do however know that there's been money taken from the reserve and provided to leisure and culture Dundee. And I think that's an interesting development. It would be appropriate for me to note that. So those are the backgrounds to our attending the meeting today, Councillor Sawyer. And the last point, we're making too much of it, is that we received the final papers for today at 9am yesterday, which limits our capacity to respond. As I say, it's not the occasion to make too much of it. But it certainly doesn't help our deliberations. There were deliberations today in the square, however, at the demonstration. So outside the council chambers at 12 noon today, there was demonstration that involved six or seven trade unions from the city, those involved in local government, but also those from other major employers in the city. We stood alongside pensioners and young people, students and community activists to express our concern what's happening. People were concerned about what might happen to the buildings. People were concerned that the decision in relation to cultural provision in the city may only be deferred, and that's something that we would seek reassurance about. But there was also concern about the impact on teacher numbers, that's in your paperwork, about youth work and about employability. So specifically, I wanted to raise a number of things in relation to the documents that are in front of you. Amongst them, we did know that there has been a reduction or a proposed reduction in employer contribution to local government pension. We have, in discussions in the last few days, sought reassurance that members of the pension scheme will be informed of this detail, this important detail. And I need to say thanks for that communication being agreed, given the request from the unions. And Appendix B, it talks about teacher numbers being reduced by 32. We were speaking to the EIS trade union in the city square today. They're concerned and citizens are concerned and trade unions are concerned about the impact of the proposal. The impact of the proposal on those that are most in need, the impact of the proposal on staff, the impact of the proposal on learning and the impact of the proposal on community. We want to know how this maximizes flexibility within schools, how it allows learning to develop, and what it means for teachers that are in their probationary year. Where will teachers that have learnt their trade in our city go for jobs if we're cutting 30 posts to the school establishment? Again, it points to the need for a needs-led budget and not one that merely hands-on cuts, however difficult or painful that process is for those taking the decisions. In your papers, in the papers circulated by Bailey Sawyer, you will see that there's a specific discussion.
Wind up, please.
Certainly. There's a reference to Dundee Youth Council. It says Dundee Youth Forum, it's actually an error, Dundee Youth Council. We'd like reassurance that there will be no job losses. We want to know when the young people will know about this decision. We hear about employability review. It suggests a figure 146,000. We want to know when the trade unions will be fully involved. We want to know why there's a figure of 46,000, 146,000 reduction prior to the review being concluded. And we want to be involved in all the discussions at an earlier stage, so that I don't need to rush my seven minutes. Thank you.
You're on mute, Convenor.
Sorry. Any members got any questions for Stuart? Kevin?
Stuart, obviously the way you found out things this year has not been the best. Normally we would have things out in advance. I suppose how the Scottish governments pondered about the money that we were going to give to local governments has been a bottle of shambles all round, hence the reason we're probably this late in setting a budget. You did mention a few things about, obviously, the potential of these jobs going in leisure and culture. It's a question that I've asked of officers. Did you ever get advised of the number of posts that would be going with by these proposals? Because having asked officers, it's something that I've not been able to establish. The other one is really in relation to education. I actually feel that education and a decent education is the way out of poverty. And obviously, we have a lot of poverty in the city. So be interested in your thoughts around how these kind of cuts will affect our children. And I suppose I should point out to you, if you didn't know, that we just recently, from the administration, got the report that seen the cuts to the attainment challenge that took another 30 posts out of education. So, you know, it's a sector that the administration seem determined to break. So I'd welcome your comments.
Yep.
Yes, specifically in relation to the posts associated with the Scottish Youth Parliament and the forum, the council. We understand that the individuals will retain employment with Dundee City Council, although the posts will go. But the detail of that was only circulated at 9am yesterday, despite it previously being carried in the press. And we would seek reassurance at this meeting now that no one will lose their jobs.
Oh, yeah.
And sorry, sorry, I apologize. The second point raised by Councillor Keenan was more broadly about education. We feel that there hasn't been a broad enough discussion with the trade unions across the city council, because the impact of the removal of teaching posts would have a direct effect. And there's folk who could speak more knowledgeably than me about that. But the effect on pupil support staff, on other school-based staff, on youth work staff, on staff in the community is something that we would be minded to have a view on. And we've not been able to discuss that because we only knew about it when we read about it in the paper. I hope that answers both questions.
Thanks very much for that, Stuart.
Stuart, since you asked for an assurance, there are no compulsory redundancy plans in Dundee City Council.
Thank you.
Okay, our second deputation, oh, sorry, Councillor Alexander.
Thanks, Convenor. It was just to ask, so first of all, thank you, Stuart, because you do come year and year out to the budget. You're always able to articulate, I think, very well on behalf of the workforce. And I think broadly speaking, across all 29 elected members, we respect you for that. We understand that and we appreciate it. And hopefully that goes without saying, no matter what decisions we come to or what difference of opinion we have on particular matters, we genuinely appreciate your efforts, the trade unions and of course, the workforce who are working in the hardest of circumstances. And the pressure continues to mount and the challenges continue to appear. So I hope that does go without saying. You referenced receiving some of the information yesterday at 9am. And I think, again, I would fully acknowledge and I think hopefully we'd all acknowledge that budgetary processes are not ideal in terms of the timeline, in terms of the way in which we move through that process and how we try and engage, of course. I know that the Convenor met with trade unions earlier in the week. Can I just confirm, did you receive all of the proposed budget papers from all of the groups under Dundee City Council yesterday at 9am? Or was it just, are you only referring to the administration out of interest?
That's correct. Despite the process taking months to arrive at the decisions. Sorry, Councillor Alexander. Firstly, thank you for your question and thank you for your comments. We received the papers from the administration at 9am yesterday. They're the only papers we've seen.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Stuart. Our second deputation is Vicky Leonard from the GMB. Should have saw Vicky earlier. Vicky, again, you've got seven minutes to address the committee. And then if you can just stay around in case members have any questions for you.
Sure. Thanks, Convenor. And Vicky Leonard, I'm the GMB organizer. I'm here today on behalf of the GMB members of Dundee. I think it's imperative that Dundee City Council make the appropriate provisions in its budget to settle equal pay debts owed to GMB Scotland's members. As far as we're aware, that's not happened. It would be financially reckless for the council not to acknowledge the debts owed to our members and plan accordingly. This will impact the public services which communities across Dundee rely on. Kicking this into the wrong grass, the council will cost the council more money and public services will continue to suffer. I think the people of Dundee have suffered enough with the cuts to services. GMB Scotland have made numerous requests to Council Leader John Alexander to meet and discuss our members' claims. So far, these have been rejected. Meetings with council officers have been offered, however, without any meaningful commitments to settle the members' claims, these meetings seem pointless. By refusing to meet with GMB, the council is refusing to pay us up to the debt owed to our members and is forcing the claims through the courts. This will inevitably result in legal costs for Dundee City Council, as well as an additional 8% monthly interest on compensation owed to our members. Councillors, especially the council leader, cannot hide behind officers. He has been elected to represent the people of Dundee and must show political leadership in the bulk, resolving this injustice. By ducking the issue and ducking the women of Dundee, the council are repeating mistakes of the past. They will have failed to learn the lessons of previous equal pay cases which implicated local authorities across Scotland. We are urging Dundee City Council to act now and put stop to this. There are a couple of questions. What provisions have been made within the budget to settle the equal pay claims? Will the council leader agree to meet with GMB Scotland and discuss our members' equal pay claims? And if not, why not? A few things about leisure and culture Dundee. We welcome the news that for now, Care Park Golf Club, Mills Observatory and Brody Castle will not face closure. Our concerns is that the greenkeepers in Care Park will again be put out to tender. Dundee City Council has gifted machinery to ID Verde. The greenkeepers still use Dundee City Council machinery, which is maintained and stored by Dundee City Council at no cost to ID Verde. What are leisure and culture actually paying ID Verde for? The greenkeepers' skilled workers earn £11.97 an hour, about a third of the cost of order to ID Verde. So I would ask, from the additional £620,000 funding, will leisure and culture be wasting more money putting this out to tender or will they bring the greenkeepers back in house? If answers no, they won't be bringing them back in. I would ask why not? And an explanation clearly outlining the monetary benefits of putting this out to tender again. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Vicky. Goodness, Mr. Many, just to comment, given the mention you made of equal pay claim. Roger, please.
Thank you, Convenor. Elected members, I can confirm that the equal pay claims raised by GMB members are continuing to progress at the employment tribunal. At this stage, it's not possible to say whether they will ultimately be successful and if they are, to what extent. As you know, however, I have delegated authority to deal with claims such as these. And you may be reassured that I will continue to keep you and other officers advised of my views as these matters develop. Thank you, Convenor.
Thanks, Roger. Bailey, Keenan next, please.
Yeah, Vicky, you mentioned, sorry, earlier, John mentioned that he had a meeting with the trade unions earlier in the week. I'm wondering if you attended that or any other member of your organization and raised these matters at that time with the administration. I mean, obviously, the administration's put their budget out early, but they certainly didn't share it with any other councillors. So, you know, it's good that Mr. Fairweather's had a wee bit of a mero and opportunity than others to scrutinize the administration's budget. And yourself.
Sorry.
Carry on. See, it must be on mute, Vicky.
Oh, sorry, this thing doesn't work properly. Sorry. And I wasn't at that meeting. So I'm not sure exactly what was said at that meeting.
Okay. I mean, I hope that the leader of the administration meets with you shortly to obviously discuss your concerns about equal pay and see how best it can be taken forward. I think it's probably something that if we need to make provision for then, we should make it as early as possible.
Okay, I'm not seeing any indications of any other questions. So, Vicky and Stuart, thank you for your contributions. You're equally welcome to stay and observe the meeting or might understand if you are to leave. So thank you very much. So, oh, removing the administration budget. I'd like to start by thanking everyone who took part in the recent budget consultation. Over 1,000 people took the time to complete the survey and their responses have helped shape our spending priorities. Budget consultation is just one of the ways we make sure that views of citizens are heard. Following a successful first round last year, which saw 12 local projects benefit from a share of around £385,000, voting opened last month for the public to decide which project should receive support in the second phase of the Dundee Climate Fund, first council-led green participatory budgeting initiative in Scotland. The public are voting and community-generated ideas collected through public consultation. Every year, the City Governance Committee receives a report on improvements that have been made through listening to the people of Dundee. Among many examples, last year, a report highlighted the development of local fairness initiatives in the Llathon and Stobswell West to address financial and health inequalities, making the adult employability service more visible, accessible and welcoming to service users, commissioning the mind of my own digital app to allow care-experienced young people to provide their views and the introduction of an online tracker to let tenants check progress with housing affairs, all demonstrating that we're a listening council. City Council was commended for its commitment to community empowerment and engagement to spark the accounts commission's very positive findings. Committee noted, sorry, the commission noted that all the recommendations made following the previous best value assurance report implemented and also said that effective leadership by members and officers in the area of strength for the council. Commission noted the clarity and coherence of the council's vision and planning, its fair and balanced public performance reporting and its alignment of resources with priorities. Also noted financial management and planning is sound. And lastly, the council has a commitment to continuous improvement and members and officers have been encouraged to share our approach with other councils. During the past year, we continued to make good progress in implementing city plan, council plan and service plans, which are built around the three key strategic priorities: to reduce child poverty and inequalities in incomes, education and health; to deliver inclusive economic growth; to tackle climate change and reach net zero emissions by 2045. On reducing poverty and inequalities, progress includes the work of Dundee's advice agencies, led to over £15 million of extra benefits being raised in the city over the past year. A successful communications campaign raised awareness of support available for those affected by the cost of living crisis. We allocated over £1.5 million investment to agree at last year's budget meeting to a range of projects tackling social inequality, such as advice services, food provision, clothing and blankets, places where people can get a warm welcome, as well as to youth diversion activities and environmental improvements. Education is one of the keys to tackling inequality. And our every Dundee learner matters strategy is proving success. Strategy is aimed at increasing the three Ps. Presence, ensuring that all young people attend regularly and promptly. Participation, creating a climate where all feel welcome and valued. And progress, developing practices that maximize the achievement and ambitions of all our young people. Increasing numbers of young people living in the most deprived areas of Dundee are leaving school having achieved literacy and university SQF level four or better. And increasing numbers of Dundee school leavers are going to positive destinations. Our efforts to support care-experienced young people and care leavers and to deliver on the Dundee promise have had a positive impact. Social work teams alongside partners have supported 600 infants, children, young people, parents and carers on the edge of care, including support from the New Beginnings Team to vulnerable pregnant women. New team around child arrangements have been introduced to ensure that the views of young people, their parents and carers are central to the support that we receive. And the new kinship team has been built to enhance support to kinship carers. A Beren's Pathfinder project has been taken forward in partnership with Angus and Persson County Councils, Please Scotland and NHS T-Side. This will provide coordinated, child-centered and trauma-informed support from all agencies to support young people who have been harmed or been witnesses to harm with services including child protection and justice, healthcare, education and therapeutic support. Millview Cottage won the Outstanding Residential Care Service Award at the Scottish Social Services Awards. Well-deserved recognition from the team which cares for young people who have all had trauma in their childhood and aims to give them a sense of belonging, create trusting and consistent relationships, give them structure and routine so they can reach their potential. We also developed Craigie Cottage, a new build house for young people to replace Fairburn Street Children's Home. And a new dedicated living space to support care-experienced young people into early adulthood is being developed by adapting flats at Reed Square to provide independent living support for 17 to 21-year-olds. A new community wellbeing centre is open to support people experiencing emotional distress. Hope Point is open day and night to help people who need immediate access to support. On delivering inclusive economic growth, examples of progress include: over 130 living wage credits at employers headquartered in Dundee, collectively employing over 42,000 workers. Over 2,000 people have been uplifted to the real living wage and Dundee is in track to see a record number of new sign-ups this financial year. Skills Academy based at Mitchell and Scotland Innovation Park was officially opened. Dundee is home to a national centre of excellence for skills development in renewable energy, sustainable mobility and decarbonisation. The eastern quarter is the next priority focus in the city's strategic investment plan, as well as developing a long-term master plan to improve the city centre. A million-pound programme of street skate works will be carried out in Commercial Street and Murraygate. Work has also started in James Thompson House, the latest development at the waterfront, due to complete next year. Radio One's big weekend at Camperdown Park generated £3.7 million for the local economy. We also hosted the World Karate Championships and other national and international events and conferences which boosted the city's economy. On tackling climate change, Dundee has been recognised as one of 119 cities across the world after taking bold leadership in environmental action and transparency. Only 26 UK local authorities achieved an A rating based on their actions to tackle climate change, with Dundee one of only three in Scotland. Council took an important step towards a sustainable future when members approved the net zero transition plan in November, aimed at making the organisation net zero by 2038. Work to transform the 1970s Bell Street multi-storey car park into a green transport calibre will get underway in March after approval of a tender earlier this month. Dundee City Council was named Public Transport Authority of the Year recent ceremony, recognising electric vehicle uptake and adoption, engagement with consumers and industry and the investment the council has made in infrastructure. Capital Plan, we approved earlier this month, will see investment of nearly £390 million in the city over the next five years, putting investment in this new school estate, notably in the £100 million East End Community Campus, which is set to open in 2025. New building, which will place Preview Academy and Craigie High School, buys a music and drama centre for pupils from across the city, wider use. Will also be a cafe and library that will be accessible during the day for public and school use. Sports facilities will include floodlit all-weather pitches, fitness suite and a dance studio, in addition to gym and game halls, which will also be available for use during the day to create a fully integrated community hub. Investment in maintaining the quality of housing stock and delivering energy efficiency products. The latest housing land audit recorded the second highest number of housing completions in the last decade, over 500, and we're on schedule to exceed the council plan target for new housing completions by the end of this financial year. Through our community benefits policy, all this investment in the city continues to create opportunities for employment, apprenticeships, work experience. Wide-ranging building programme last year delivered local spend of over £24 million, using more than 80% of local labour. We also began to develop a new strategic growth partnership between the city council and Scottish and UK governments to continue the long-term regeneration of the city, stimulating growth and investment and to build the T-City's regional deal and emerging projects such as the Eden Project, the Life Sciences Innovation District and the Aberdeen Cyber Quarter. Building the achievement of the past year, the budget being proposed today will ensure that the council remains financially sustainable while using the resources available to continue to improve outcomes for our citizens. As in previous years, the administration has tried to minimize the impact of any savings through prudent financial management and efficiencies, including those achieved through the council's design and modern council transformation programme. By doing so, we've been able to identify base budget savings of around £11 million, significantly reducing the requirement for more difficult savings decisions. Deal with cost pressures, support the priorities in city plan and council plan and to invest in areas of service that people tell us are their priorities. We've increased funding, cost of living crisis by £500,000, creating economic opportunities by £160,000, proving the environment £200,000, leisure and culture Dundee £620,000, children's services £2 million. And £3.4 million is provided from the Scottish government to support the freezing of the council tax. We've been very open about the challenges we face, but the administration believes that the budget proposals we're submitting today represent the best way to protect public services and maintain our investment in the city's priorities, reducing poverty and inequality, delivering inclusive economic growth and tackling climate change. After relying for the savings proposed in this budget, our spending proposals for next year amount to almost £463 million. This expenditure will deliver vital public services for the people of Dundee and fund our plans for investment. And I have to submit to committee the administration's 2024/25 revenue budget. This includes a fee on council tax. This includes a fee on council tax, meaning council tax band D figure remains at forty hundred and eighty six pounds and forty three pence. I have a seconder. Be helpful.
Happy to formally second, Convenor.
Thank you, councillor Alexander. I'm going to call on councillor Keenan, I'm assuming to move the Labour amendment.
Okay. Obviously pleased that some money's went back into leisure and culture within your own budget. Given that Labour has attempted over the last few years. To put money in leisure and culture so as it wouldn't be in that position where. It would have been encouraging people through the door in years gone by. To obviously boost their coffers and save having been to be in that position where. So much of their organisation was under threat. And unless they received the sort of bailout, then quite a number of places would have closed. Such as Care Park Golf Club or Golf Course that, you know, has twelve hundred members that are be doing something active. And keeping their health and wellbeing in good place. You know, we're happy enough with your spend on food banks. And the fact that that's vitally needed, our change to that would be that our proposals would also spend. Three million pound on capital investment and energy efficient projects. So as to deliver an ongoing saving of about two hundred odd thousand, which would secure money for food banks going forward. Because we realise that every year it's a struggle to come up with the money. Based on the settlement that we get from the Scottish government. Whilst mentioning Scottish government, the sort of bullying tactics of accept the council tax freeze or otherwise. And the tactics that they're using on other councils is really deplorable. You know, councillors are elected members. And should be making decisions that are correct for their area and shouldn't be dictated to through government as is happening. So, you know, it's starting to make me think as to whether being a member of Cosley, we'd be better saving the three hundred one odd thousand pounds worth of grant there and pulling out. Because there is little point of being there. When it comes to the real crutch of where we are. Then, and when it comes to economic development, then education's vital to that. And unless we're educating our children. Then we, you know, we'll be letting a generation slip away without a decent education. And, you know, it's all right saying people move out of school and they move into further education. But the Scottish government continues to cut these places as well. And even that will become more difficult, so it's more important that we have teachers in front of our children. Making sure that that education is delivered to them. So I'm appalled that the SNP administration in Dundee would think about cutting teachers on the back of. The attainment challenge fund that's been cut year after year for government. And whereas it went to other local authorities, that because of the settlement they get from the Scottish government. Have probably just used it to prop up a council tax bill or save a cut in their area. Whereas we make them and we're making them the teachers. I'm shocked, shocked that we would do such a thing. If we're going to make a difference to people's life and get them out of poverty. And get that, reduce that need for feed bank, then food banks, then people need to earn a decent wage. And if we're out of the economy, that you say we all want and that being one that's a high wage. You know, good jobs and high wages, then that comes through having a decent education. Cutting teachers isn't going to do anything for that. The other areas that we'd see as well is that, you know, you've tinkered around the edges of wee events. Happening in the city at times and, you know. The last offering I think in the city square at Christmas was quite shocking. And we would like to go back to having the fireworks displays that were attended by fifty thousand people, a third of the population of the city. And we never really ever heard people saying, that's the worst offering we've ever had. We never got that when it was fireworks, we'd done that well. I'd like to see we're going back to doing things well, rather than, you know, half hearted, half hearted things that we try to do, so. You know, really important that we have the teachers in there. Really important that we'd start to look at cleaning up our streets. And bringing in the dog wardens as well, because the amount of dog fowling that's going on will become a health issue within the city. So it's really important that we start to look towards addressing that. I know that you could put some money into cleaning, but it's probably because you realise you broke it so far. Bus shelters is someone else as well, if you've, they were recently cleaned because I was at one last night. But they're normally awful and they need cleaned more. And if we're going to have visits to the city, then we've got to give a good impression of clean streets and. You know, and a clean environment that people walk around, so with that, that's myself move the Labour budget.
Thanks for that, Kevin. George, your seconding?
Thank you, Convenor. Can I first of all give a big shout out and praise to the staff from the cleaners to the CEO. Who work tirelessly and are committed to providing the best service possible to the citizens of Dundee. I would like to wholeheartedly second Labour's amendment to reverse the cuts to this miserly underfunded budget. Blame Westminster, blame pandemic, blame the war in Ukraine. But never blame the political choices that this administration and your SNP government have made. Oh, and not let's forget the worst cost of living crisis since records began. I'm glad that common sense has prevailed. And you have seen fit to reverse your proposed cuts to leisure and culture Dundee. Councillor Shaw will be happy that her political career is intact for now. And she will not have to cross the red line into oblivion as she announced at a pack meeting of Stogswell Forum members. A bold statement to make indeed, but I suspect she already knew that the administration's position was to abandon the cuts to leisure and culture Dundee. Once again, Labour and the power of the people have forced your hand to do the right thing for the benefit of our citizens. People have had enough, enough of services being cut to the bone. Paying more and getting less, job losses and increased workloads for those staff left behind. Doing their very best to deliver the same service standards with ever diminishing resources. The marrow is running dry. On what planet do you think that cutting thirty two point seven full time equivalent teacher posts. From this children families budget is going to improve the attainment levels of our children. And close the poverty related attainment gap of our most vulnerable children. That's on top of the twenty two plus posts gone just last month. From education due to the reduction in the Scottish Achievement Challenge money that your SNP government has imposed. That's approximately seventy posts in the last three years. Convenor, if you really believe that every Dundee learner matters. Put your money where your mouth is and accept Labour's motion to reverse the catastrophic cuts. I second.
Well, thank you for that contribution. I do find it a wee bit difficult to take lectures and. Public sector spending from a party's proposals that hollered would have. Cut over half a billion pounds from the Scottish. Spenditure. A, no, I think I saw councillor Rome. And then councillor Alexander.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to come back in some comments regarding. The desire to boost the city's economic environment by Bailey Keenan. Yet at the same time, cutting the budget for the promotion of the city post, cutting the budget for city events. And I just, I'm totally flabbergasted to be honest. And what the proposal is instead, instead of having a series of free events over the Christmas time. For people that are in poverty, for people that can access freely. The proposal is to literally put their money up in smoke over the period of about an hour, so. I'm quite flabbergasted by that, Chair, and I just wanted to get that on record. I'm disappointed and confused by the approach that's been taken by the Labour group there. And I'll be back in the motion that we're putting forward to Chair.
Thank you. Go on.
Thank you, Convenor. Similarly to councillor Rome, I wondered where Bailey Keenan was going because he referenced. Christmas and yet there isn't a single penny more for Christmas, so. It's one thing to complain about it, but then you should perhaps do something about it in the budget papers. I think as councillor Rome also says, there's no economic support here and we know that one of the biggest challenges we face in the city is not just about. Providing the important lifeline support and I absolutely acknowledge that the Labour group have also put in half million pounds to support. The cost of living crisis, food banks, food ladders, and I think we'd all agree that that's really important, but we also need to do something to help people. Into employment and that's why economic investment and those economic posts are so vitally important as well. I also felt the need to just come in and I'm slightly confused because councillor Crichtank seems to be. Confused about the process to get to a budget as she referenced SNP proposals and of course everybody. Who's elected on the council and has been privy to a number of budgets over the years. Knows that they aren't the SNP's budget proposals, as if they were, they'd be in our papers. So we haven't bent any pressure from the Labour group, I can assure you. Because we've been working on this budget for a significant period of time to get it in the best shape possible. And can finish by raising a couple of concerns, I suppose, and the reason that I won't be supporting the Labour budget. Because it's often the things that we don't mention or don't see that are equally important. Over consecutive meetings, particularly Bailey Keenan has complained and noted. That there is more investment required for repairs and maintenance, yet in the Labour budget, they've cut. Various repairs and maintenance and cyclical maintenance budgets, so that's slightly concerning. They've cut pupils' support. I didn't hear anybody referencing that in relation to education, so how are those pupils. Going to be travelling to and from school is of equal concern and. Probably most concerning, I think, knowing the challenges that we face as a city. Is they have not built in, as we have within our budget, the two million pounds to support children's social work services. We know that's a critical area of service. We know that the demand on that service continues to increase. Which is why our administration has put in a significant sum of money to help over the coming year. To try and ensure that there is adequate resource to help the most. Important situations or critical situations that some of our young people will face, so. For all those reasons and more, I cannot support the Labour amendment to the budget proposals and I think it is. Concerning that the narrative that we often hear does not match the substance of what they've put in their budget papers.
I think the old adage is sometimes it's not what they say, it's what they don't say. Councillor Lynn, please.
Thank you, Convenor. As members will know, the Integration Joint Board is a separate budgetary process and our budget meeting is at the end of next month. However, I think it's important to acknowledge at our budget meeting that in the last year, which ends on the thirty first of March. The council contributed a hundred and three million pounds. Along with our partners in NHS T side to the joint budget. I think that the narrative that councillor Crichtank was presenting was very negative. About talking about contraction of services and poorer services. Now, I'd like to point out that part of that hundred and three million that we contributed, and that's a lot of money, has been put to extremely good use. We're not talking about contraction of services and the Health and Social Care Partnership, we're talking about improvement of services. And Hope Point is probably the finest example of that. I was there recently. And in the six months since they have opened, in excess of six hundred and fifty people. Six hundred and fifty individuals either in distress or with mental health problems have contacted the centre directly for help. There have been seventeen hundred separate contacts in that six months. I think that's a real success story. And that comes from money that the council uses to fund the Health and Social Care Partnership, so it's not all negative. I won't be supporting the Labour budget, I'll be supporting you, Convenor.
Thanks very much. I've got councillor Anderson next, please.
Thank you, Convenor. I know that councillor Crichtank was very much about, oh, you just blame everybody, but unfortunately the bug does not stop. Here, the bug stops fairly with Westminster. What we know is in that last, in the last budget from the UK government, there was twenty seven billion pounds worth of funds available for public services. And the Chancellor at that point decided to cut taxes. Now, if the Scottish government had actually followed through with those consequential. Consequentials, the Scottish government would be cutting the NHS as well as everything else. So we are mitigating, we're trying to mitigate Westminster as best we can with both hands tied behind our backs. And we're also trying to tackle poverty and child poverty. You know, so the Labour Party will be very aware that we've introduced the Scottish Child Payment, it's been increased from ten pound to twenty pound to twenty five pound. And it's now been increased to twenty six seventy in April. And one of the advisers to the Labour Party, Professor Danny Dorling, said the Scottish Child Payment. Is the single policy intervention that's created the largest fall in child poverty anywhere in Europe in the last forty years. So yeah, the Scottish government does have its hands tied, it is trying to mitigate savage cuts. From a government in Westminster that doesn't share any of our priorities. I'm concerned in your budget that there's no acknowledgement of that, but you're also taking one point seven million out of the renewals in the Pairs budget. Which is only two point four million, so you're only leaving seven hundred thousand in there in case there's any issues. And just on a very small point, we also looked at changing the food waste collection service, but when we dug into that. Proposal to save a hundred and twenty six thousand pounds, we realised it would cost a hundred and thirty odd thousand pounds to implement it. And actually it could be overturned if the circular economy bill comes back and means that we have to actually maintain weekly collections. So although it looked like a savings, it ended up being not a saving this year and possibly something that would have to reverse the following year. So I think a bit of respect for the work that the Scottish government is trying to do to mitigate. The damage of the Tory government in Westminster would go a long way and I won't be supporting your budget either.
Thanks for that. Councillor McHugh, authority.
Thank you. I hope this is an appropriate time for me to ask questions and make comment.
Councillor Hugh, just sorry to interrupt you for a second, your group leader seems to want to make a point of order. I'm sure he's going to reference the landing order it is.
You know, just, we just saw the comment there of the, can officers, point of order. Can officers confirm that the savings proposed that Labour have made. Through the changes to the service of waste collection, deliver that saving? Given that it's an officer's report?
We're not in a pantomime, councillor Keenan, so just.
Seems you are.
Councillor McHugh, please. What is yours?
Okay. I have a comment on item seven of the report budget consultation and I have a question. On the integrated impact assessment which was attached, but before I do that. I just want to ask, is this how we conduct our business? You've sent out pages and pages and pages of reports with integrated impact assessments attached to them and given us twenty minutes to go through it. I'm going to address the report dated the nineteenth of February. From City Governance Committee, which had an integrated impact assessment attached to it, because this is the one that I have had time. To spend, to absorb properly. Item seven of the report from the City Governance Committee. Revenue budget and council tax. Notes that there was a ninety percent increase in the number of completed responses to the budget consultation. Already referred to by you councillor Sawyers compared to last year. An indication surely of a growing interest from our citizens in the council's budget proposals. My question relates to how the responses gathered in the consultation are treated. Councillor Sawyer said that they helped to shape our budget priorities, but did they? The rent consultation that we do every year determines the level of the rent increase. Albeit within very narrow parameters. The opposite happens, it appears, for the budget consultation. Respondents gave education the highest priority when asked to rate levels of importance. And similarly, rated education as the service that had become more important to them over the last year. I think citizens then are entitled to ask why their views were not listened to in relation to this budget as they are with the rent consultation. That's my comment. I now have a question on the integrated impact assessment.
Well, councillor McHugh, we're in a formal situation, so we're not really at a point of taking questions. I'll allow you to make an observation.
Okay, I'll make an observation. An integrated impact assessment is a very important tool for elected members when they're making decisions, particularly difficult decisions. And when negative impacts are identified, there should be, detail should be given as to how these negative impacts will be mitigated. What you're going to do, what actions you're going to put in place, what measures you're going to take to mitigate the adverse and negative impacts of the decision that you've taken, the proposals you're putting forward. In this integrated impact assessment, negative impacts have been identified against age, disability and education. And in each of these, information is given about how we'll continue to monitor the impact. Well, there's nothing new there. We'll continue because it's ongoing. And that the services undertaking an additional support needs review. Well, there's nothing new there because that's already started. That's ongoing. So neither of these so-called mitigations that relate to the negative impacts of this proposal to cut teachers are mitigations. So I don't, I was really looking for, it's a terrible decision to take to cut the number of teachers across our schools. And I'm looking.
Wind up, please.
No proper mitigations have been given in this integrated impact assessment report. The assurance is given and at all business as usual. So considering the high importance that citizens have attached to education in the consultation, they might wonder why little, why little serious consideration has been given to how the negative impacts of these cuts to the education service will be addressed.
Please, thank you for those comments. I've got councillor Toend next. Siobhan.
Thank you. Could you hear me okay? That's absolutely fine. Thank you. I appreciate the kind of concerns about education, but I would like to kind of point out that actually we're one of the only councils to increase our family and children and families budget up by 10.1%. It is the best school estate that we've ever had, and that is a massive achievement for us. So we have got to look at the bigger picture in that respect. So we can't talk about constant cuts when actually we are increasing the children and families budget. So that needs to be recognised. Another thing that needs to be recognised, and I do think that Heather has touched upon it, and Georgia, I'm going to slightly call you out on this because, you know, it was a very kind of negative second, but you seem to infer that somehow the Scottish government was responsible for the cost of living crisis. Can I just categorically say that that is not true? And I hope you miss, I hope I misheard on that actually, because that cost of living crisis was caused by the Liz Truss budget. And we are all suffering the consequences of that. This is why we're all having to dip into reserves. This is why the inflation is absolutely through the roof. And this is why we're all having to sit and make absolutely difficult decisions. That was not a Scottish Parliament or a Scottish government choice that was made. And I know that there's a kind of constant narrative that somehow we're always blaming Westminster. Well, it seems like in this budget that somehow we function as an independent, independent nation, because the blame never seems to go any further than the Scottish Parliament, to the point where I'm pretty sure ahead we were responsible for the cost of living crisis in that respect. So I do think that kind of, we need to kind of calm the narrative down just a little bit. As Heather pointed out, councillor Anderson pointed out, there is, we spend a lot of money locally and nationally trying to mitigate Tories' cuts. And that is something that we all have to do, 13 moving into 14 years of austerity. I look forward, well, I say I look forward to it. I look forward to the Labour manifesto for the general election because even before this manifesto is coming out, actually what we're seeing is constant backtracks on what's been spent and all the great ideas that Labour once were proposing seem to be slipping away the closer you guys seem to get to power.
Thank you, Siobhan. Jacks, councillor Finnegan, we're not really taking questions, but I'll take a contribution.
Well, it kind of is a question, but it's pertaining to what we're discussing. Earlier in the the meeting, it was said that there'd be no compulsory redundancies for teachers. So I'm querying, would that be voluntary redundancies? Is that retirement? How many vacant posts are there already? And how many school days are we using supply teachers? And what does that, how is that equate to whole time equivalence? I'd like this information to see, to give me an idea of what's going on in schools just now, because my grandchildren all attend schools and there seems to be an awful lot of supply teachers in there. And it could be a history teacher that's teaching geography or even biology or covered in the class for an hour. So I think we need that information as well as any proposal to cut posts. Is there any way that the elected members could have that information, Bailey Sawyers?
I'm feeling generous, so I'll ask Mrs May or if she can answer that question for you.
Thank you.
There was quite a lot in there and I probably don't have all the answers to all of these questions. Thank you, convener. But I can certainly give some information that might reassure how this is happening just now. So if I go over some of the numbers with you, because we are talking about full time equivalents. So we're not talking about individual teachers and anyone losing a job. We're talking about our staffing exercise and how the turnover every year will allow us to make this saving. And so if I can give you the number that Dundee is expected to have in terms of the number of teachers according to our roles and our projected role going forward, that number is 1,395 full time equivalents. At our September census, the number we had in our Dundee schools was 1,431 teachers, full time equivalents. So the largest proportional increase of any local authority in Scotland. So we're way over at that point. So overspent, over budget. So what we're trying to do is just bring our budget back in line for the number of teachers we have, for the number of children we have in our Dundee schools. So we're not, no one's losing a job. We will do this through the exercise that we do every year, the turnover at staffing time, the NQTs that come in. All our NQTs will get the opportunity to apply for the staffing list as they do every year. We will maintain teacher numbers and class sizes according to S N C T 2.9. And as in all situations every year, head teachers are empowered to deploy these teachers to meet the local need and their particular, their particular school setting. So we will continue to have a pupil teacher ratio of 3.3, sorry, 13.3. The national average is 13.2. So not much difference there. Across our primary schools, the FTE allowance will reduce by equivalent of 20 FTE. That's based on the number of children we will have projected in our primary schools. And that's the equivalent of 0.6 of a teacher across each school. In secondary, one per school, one FTE per school. Again, head teachers will have the empowerment that they always do to deploy their teachers as they wish, based on subject choices, et cetera. And we will reduce our NQT's non-teaching time. So just now, our NQTs could be asked to teach for four days. Ours currently teach for three days. We will ask them to teach for three and a half days. And that's the equivalent of another 4.7 FTE. So none of this is about redundancy or people losing jobs. It's about how we apply our formula of teachers to our schools.
Okay, Jacks.
That's great. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Georgia, I see you've got your hand up, but you've already spoken in this. So I'm.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks, convener. It's just to respond to the comment.
Georgia, you've already spoken, so I'm sorry. I think there's no other indications. We'll move to the vote on the administration motion against the Labour amendment. So Willie, please.
Thank you very much, convener. So the motion by yourself, convener, seconded by councillor Alexander, is circulated. The amendment by Bailey Keenan, seconded by councillor Crichtank, is also circulated. Bailey Sawyers.
Ed Motion.
Councillor Alexander.
Motion.
Councillor Anderson.
Motion.
Lord Provost Campbell.
Motion.
Deputy Lord Provost Cordell.
Motion.
Bailey Dawson.
The motion.
Councillor Nakla.
Motion.
Councillor Flynn.
That's the motion.
Councillor Hunter.
Motion.
Councillor Lynn.
Motion.
Bailey Roberts.
The motion.
Councillor Rome.
Motion.
Councillor Short.
The motion.
Thank you. Councillor Smith.
Motion.
Councillor Tolland.
Motion.
Bailey Keenan.
Amendment.
Councillor Crichtank.
Amendment.
Councillor Finnegan.
Amendment.
Councillor McHugh.
Amendment.
Councillor McCarvin.
Amendment.
Councillor Malone.
The amendment.
Councillor Scullen.
The amendment.
Bailey Wright.
Amendment.
Bailey MacPherson.
No vote.
Councillor Coleman.
No vote.
Councillor Creighton.
No vote.
Councillor Duncan.
No vote.
Bailey Scott.
No vote.
Yeah, thank you. That gives you 15 for the motion and eight for the amendment. The motion is currently carried.
Okay, thanks. So we move on to the whipdemp amendment now. So councillor Duncan, Craig, to move, please.
Okay, thanks, convener. And yeah, I'll formally move the Liberal Democrat group budget proposals. Can I firstly and sincerely thank officers and corporate services for all of the help and professional advice that they've provided during the budget process? Officers, particularly, I'm going to reference Mr Emmett and Mr Thompson, have been really excellent and highly efficient. And I'm sure that actually all members of the council are grateful for the support the officers give, you know, on occasions like this. As for the recent events, it's quite clear from public reaction that, you know, feedback from the Dundee public that there would have been great concern bordering, I think, upon outrage of rumours around the potential closure of two public libraries in Charleston and Stobswell, closure of potentially Kaird Park Golf Course, Mills Observatory in Broughty Castle, whatever come to pass. So I'm actually very pleased to learn recently that, you know, these proposals are not going to be at this stage going any further forwards. Certainly, I was quite upset, to put it mildly, that there was any talk at all about proposals to possibly close Broughty Ferry Castle, or indeed to introduce potentially railway business unfriendly parking charges in Broughty Ferry, central Broughty Ferry. That would certainly not help the currently thriving businesses there. However, we do feel strongly that suggesting consultation on the future of the, some of the facilities that I've just referenced, you've Kaird Park, Mills, et cetera, will simply add a degree of uncertainty for both staff and indeed service users. It would have been far better, we think, to put an unequivocal and reassuring message that these proposals are certainly off the table, rather than weaving something of a sword of Damocles hanging over the heads of staff and indeed service users. Additionally, we also think it'd be akin to the clearest cut of all to take away the shelter tenant shopping, shoppers' bus and supported bus services away, which currently helps some of the very, you know, most vulnerable elderly people in our community to get out and about and go shopping. We're actually pleased that the Community Transport Association agreed with us and highlighted the need to save these vital services. And the Liberal Democrat budget amendment would indeed find the funding to save these bus services. Moreover, our proposals also include the 156,500 necessary to allow Dundee City Council to promote new bus contracts for the shoppers' bus services. These would be the 204, the 206 and 236, rather than look forward to them somewhat forewarnedly being axed on the 31st of March, not a prospect that many people are looking forward to. Furthermore, to promote Broughty Ferry's shopping area, in addition to axing the controversial on-street car parking charge proposals, the whipdemp proposal would actually see a cut of £0.30 to off-street parking charges in Broughty Ferry car parks. And this would also extend to other shopping areas such as the Hilltown and South Tay Street, and also remove West End car parking charges completely, given the negative effects on the community there. We really must be supporting our shopping areas citywide, and our budget proposals would aim to do just that. Also promoting additional funding, capital funding that is for the district shopping centres in Wockham, Hilltown, Stobswell, Perth Roads and Broughty Ferry. My councillor, my colleague councillor Daniel Coleman will second me, convener, and I thank the committee and yourself for the time to put forward our proposals.
Thanks, Craig. And councillor Coleman, Daniel.
Thank you, Mr convener. I'll start by seconding councillor Duncan by echoing his thanks to council officers. The Scottish Liberal Democrat group strongly opposes proposals to reduce teacher numbers, reduce resource coordinators in secondary schools and cut primary school support staff. We include the necessary funding in our proposals to avoid these cuts. Next Monday, we have a report coming to Children, Families and Communities Committee of the council on educational achievement in Dundee. And while there is much positive progress and much to be happy with, which we welcome and thank teachers and pupils for their hard work, the gap in literacy achievement between pupils from the most deprived areas remains around 20 points behind those from the least deprived areas. Furthermore, the poverty-related attainment gap remains wider in Dundee than it was in 2016-17. There's been a clear, there's been clear areas of real progress across Dundee schools and teaching staff and pupils deserve much credit for this. But the poverty-related attainment gap will not be closed with fewer teachers across the city. The Scottish Liberal Democrat budget also, amendment also sees a proposal to improve Dundee's pavements and roads and also invest in new capital equipment to tackle pothole repairs more robustly. We are proposing an additional £2 million next year for road resurfacing, £1 million on pavement resurfacing to probably tackle the state of many footpaths and road surfaces that we get, I'm sure we all get so many complaints about. And the necessary substantial sum to allow the Roads Maintenance Partnership to purchase state-of-the-art equipment to improve pothole repairs with a permanent repair to avoid the continual need to carry out multiple repairs over time at the same location. We have never, as a council, had a budget for this capital equipment and it's about time we did. As we get many complaints about the state of pavements and roads in the city, across the city, this sort of capital investment in our infrastructure is absolutely vital. Other Liberal Democrat proposals, double the frequency of bus shelter cleaning back to monthly as it used to be before the council halved it in 2022, reducing the brown bin charge rather than increasing it as the administration group proposes, and opposing the increase in bulky uplift charge. And we'd aim to cut the proposed charge by £8 per collection. We also propose additional expenditure for further support of Dundee's food network, youth and community activities, and also for city events. Liberal Democrat budget proposals avoid the worst of the worst cuts and also allow for growth in key areas like supporting local communities, roads and pavement improvements, local shopping area improvements, and keeping our streets cleaner. We have listened carefully to our constituents and to the issues they feel that are the most important and feel our proposals are fair and deliverable. But lastly, can I say I do find claims the administration that they listen to young people to be somewhat ill-founded, where you can't even get right the title of members of the Scottish Youth Parliament in the papers. It seems to read Y M S P and referencing an organisation that does not exist in Dundee Youth Forum. I would know, I chaired the Dundee Youth Council for 18 months, as some of you may remember. It is especially regrettable for me to see a reduction of support to the MSYPs in Dundee Youth Council. Thank you, Mr convener.
Convener, all suffice. Councillor Creighton, Michael. Um, who's our Creighton? Michael.
Um, thank you, uh, convener. I just want to highlight, um, a few things that my colleagues, um, have omitted, because we've got a lot of great things in the budget we are proposing today. Um, as in past years, the Liberal Democrat budget has sought to invest in street cleaning, um, and this year is certainly no different. We want to return, um, to the amount of street cleaning posts that we had in the city back in twenty fifteen. This is some thirty nine posts, the number of full-time equivalent street cleaning and rapid response team jobs having been slashed from one hundred and fifteen in twenty fifteen to seventy six today. And we continue to get many complaints from constituents from across our wards about the street cleaning in the city, which is simply not as good as it used to be. The street cleaning sweeping staff, um, do a really good job but simply don't have the resources and are being taken away by this administration. Um, it's a picture of decline, um, again from the city council. Um, as a group, um, we want a cleaner city, and to achieve this, we need to help our existing, um, and great staff, um, do what they do best. Um, we'll also not cut the waste management, advertisement and proposed budget. And the Liberal Democrat proposals also create new posts in forestry and animal control and to add the community safety warden and countryside range staff. Um, I also, um, just listening to, um, the previous, um, from the SNP group, um, I think when you say Dundee promise, I think the only promise that I hear from this SNP group is dirtier streets and less value for taxpayers. Um, so I'm more than happy to support my colleagues in our budget and, um, that's all I've got to say. Um, well, Mr Convener or convener, whatever you want.
Convener, all suffice. So thank you for your brevity, if nothing else. Uh, Bailey Keenan, Kevin.
Just, uh, just to say that, uh, whilst the, the Lib Dems didn't see fit to support the, the Labour group budget, uh, I'm prepared to support theirs. There is many things in their proposals that, uh, I would probably at other times vote against. However, the real bit that matters is education in our city. And it's delivering the teachers that were the, the wish of the Labour group. So I'm prepared to support that. I think that, uh, you know, hearing from someone earlier in the debate from the SNP suggesting that you know, we've invested really well in schools, you know, we've got, we've, we've got great facilities. That's marvelous, but you need the teachers in front of children to make a difference. It's like having a free, you've got free prescriptions. But if you can't see a doctor, you'll never get a free prescription in your hand. And it wasn't that long ago, where the free bus pass wasn't a very good either, because you could hardly get a bus, there was that many cancelled in Dundee. So, you know, all right saying everything's great, haven't we got the best buildings? You need teachers in front of children. You need to make sure they come out of the school with the best possible education that they can. So I'll be supporting the Lib Dem motion.
Thank you for your positive comments, as always, Bailey Keenan. Chris Alexander, John.
Thanks very much, convener. A couple of points I'm supposed to raise. I have similar concerns around this budget in the sense um, that it also cuts repairs and maintenance budget. I, I don't understand why anybody thinks that's a good idea, given the challenges that we've had over the last couple of years, and it seems that we're just skirting over that as if it's nothing, when in actual fact, what we've seen consistently through reports through committee is a requirement to, uh, not just maintain funding, but look at increasing where possible, and both the Lib Dem budget and the Labour budget seek to cut repair and maintenance budget. It, it just doesn't make any sense. It doesn't bear any relation to some of the comments they've made in previous committees either. Notwithstanding those points, I, I think, um, there's always merit in looking at the opposition budgets likewise, as has been acknowledged, I think, in some of the, uh, more amicable contributions this evening, uh, there is merit, uh, from an opposition perspective in what the SNP has in our budget. There are good ideas. No one group has a monopoly on those good ideas, but it's on the whole, when we zoom out and look at how they all stitch together in terms of addressing issues of social deprivation, looking at addressing issues of, uh, the economy, looking at, uh, those fundamental issues of, again, the points that have been made around street cleansing. Uh, and again, we've tried to take all of that on board, and I go back to some of the comments that colleagues made earlier on. It is a fact, whether or not you disagree with it, is irrelevant. It's a fact, and it will, uh, again, be backed up by officer contributions. The Children and Families budget will increase by ten percent. That's more than twenty one million pounds in the next year. Um, as we've seen in the report that's coming to committee, attainment continues to go in the right direction. We've also seen, um, that in terms of the, uh, quality of the estate within, uh, the city, the schools have never been in such a, a, a good condition as they are. In recent years, we've also seen record-high employment levels, the highest for twenty years. Uh, for the very first time, we were named as one of the twenty destinations for foreign direct investment as a, as a result of the work that this administration has done. We've been named as one of only one hundred and nineteen global cities for our leadership, our bold leadership was the exact wording on climate-related issues. And very recently, as has already been referenced in the report and inspection, investigation, whatever description you want to use by Audit Scotland, the, the heading for their press release said Dundee City Council is well-run with a clear vision to address the challenges. That is an independent organisation, so I don't think much of what has been said chimes with the reality. Now, we all know the difficult context, and the, this SNP administration has, uh, consistently and consecutively grappled with those challenges and delivered what I think to be a sustainable and prudent budget that balances the needs and requirements of the citizens of this city with financial realities. We cannot borrow our way out of this problem. We need to, yes, look at using reserves, but not using all of the reserves so that should an event happen over, God forbid, but should an event happen over the next six, twelve months, that we actually have the capacity to deal with it. For all those reasons and more, I can't support, uh, the Lib Dem, uh, amendment. I think to, uh, build a budget that is increasing the headcount within, uh, the council whilst, um, only balancing that with one-off funding stores up problems for next year. And if we had accepted previous, uh, amendments to the budget by the Lib Dem group, then actually that twenty four million pound gap that we were dealing with this year could well have been thirty or more million, because the previous versions of the budgets have been predicated on a greater level of one-off funding. And for, as I've said, for those reasons, I'll be supporting you, convener.
Thank you for that. Uh, next, Bailey McPherson, Fraser.
Uh, tha- tha- thanks, convener. And I want to make my comments in the spirit of the last two contributions, which I think were as, as best they could be, uh, as, as positive as, 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 as they could be. Not that I agree with everything councillor Alexander had to say, but I'll come on to that in a moment. I'm grateful to Bailey Keenan, uh, for his, um, support on this. There are quite clearly areas where, in fact, all three budgets that have been presented thus far have, uh, a commonality. I think, uh, the leader of the council has said at previous budgets that, you know, ninety nine point, whatever it is, percent of the budgets do have, um, commonality. And I think we all, irrespective of party, um, understand the issues facing the council. We might have slightly different ways of, uh, approaching it. But, uh, in, in the totality of expenditure, what we are arguing about is quite a small percentage of the overall revenue budget of four hundred and sixty six million pounds. The swipe from councillor Alexander about one-year funding is a nonsense, because he knows perfectly well that we're only in a position to set a one-year budget. So how on earth are we? If we were setting a five-year budget, we would indeed find the, uh, the, uh, funding over five years to ensure that, for example, the additional street cleaners that we think are so vital. Um, so if you're going to be critical, be critical of things that actually, any group on the council today setting a one-year budget is actually able to set. The, the comments also about repairs and maintenance, then the, the savings that we're taking from that are really, really quite minor in relation to the budget. If you go through, uh, what we've taken from, uh, the budget volume, and we're not touching in any way at all the H R A element of the repairs and newles fund at all. So I, 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 I just view these criticisms as really negativity for no particular reason. And I think it's, but I, but I do say, I agree with much of what councillor Alexander, apart from that, I agree with much of what councillor Alexander and councillor Bailey Keenan rather, um, had to say. And I think there are times where, I think, taking the heat out of things and trying to, uh, uh, approach things in a positive manner is actually quite a good thing to do. And with that in mind, I have one plea. Um, Shona went raking in a cupboard under, um, a lot of pressure from COSLA. And I have to say, and I, I say this in a positive sense, um, I heard councillor Katie Hagman, who, Hagman, who's the COSLA resources spokesperson, and an SNP councillor, uh, on, uh, uh, TV over the weekend. And I, I, I saw the quote, the quote that COSLA put out on her behalf, um, regarding, uh, the budget settlement. And I have to say, to be fair to her and the COSLA president, both SNP councillors, they played the thing with a pretty straight bat, because, well, let quote, quote her, whichever way you cut it, this is not a good budget for Scottish local government or the communities we represent. So back to Shona and her cupboard. So Shona went raking in the cupboard under a lot of pressure from COSLA. I'm not suggesting for a moment that we pull out of COSLA, by the way. Um, I, I, I think there is a much to be said for, uh, thirty two councils coming together and, for example, negotiating together on, 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 um, issues affecting local government as a whole across Scotland. However, uh, under pressure, um, the Deputy First Minister has come up with sixty two point seven million pounds, which we didn't know we were getting until she made that announcement very recently. And I know it is predicated on, um, the, um, the UK budget, uh, that the Chancellor will deliver next Wednesday. But on the assumption that the Barnet consequential has come along, and I think we are pretty confident that that was, is actually going to happen, uh, Dundee City Council will receive, if we go by G A E calculations, roughly one point seven million, which is amazingly very similar to the amount of the cost of, um, retaining the thirty two point seven full-time equivalent, uh, teaching posts at one point nine million. And my plea to the administration today is, please give consideration to using the additional uh, funding that you receive, not to increase reserves to eleven point seven million, they'll be sitting at ten million if the administration budget is passed, uh, but to use that to save these thirty two point seven, uh, sorry, thirty two, yeah, thirty two point seven full-time equivalent teaching posts. I think that would be positive use of that money, should it come forward, which I think we can be reasonably confident will happen. And with that, convener, I'll thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Bailey McPherson. I don't really understand, oh, I, I understand your last point, but it seems to directly contradict the statement that, um, your colleagues have moved and seconded, so.
No, it doesn't.
It says, item six, note that the council share estimated of one point seven million of an additional sixty two point seven million pound funding recently announced by the Deputy First Minister, we confirmed to the Scottish Government following the UK budget announcement in sixth March twenty twenty four, then this should be added to general fund balances.
Yeah, but that's because we are not taking the cut, convener. You are.
You're just cutting the money to children's services by two million pounds, okay?
What a rubbish.
Uh, councillor.
Nonsense.
Thank you, convener. If it's appropriate to come in now, if people have finished speaking, I'll come in. Um, I, I don't, I'd like to keep in the posit spirit of this, but there's just a couple of things I just want to, uh, address. Um, Bailey McPherson mentioned, among others, uh, one is this, this idea of, uh, one-off funding and one-year budgets. I think councillor Alexander was very clear that the issue is that there's a lot of one-off spend in proposals being put forward, especially by the Liberal Democrats, who put forward the, the highest borrowing of any of these proposals from one-off spending in order to fund ongoing revenue commitments. And I think this is where the concern comes in. Uh, and what I'd like to say is that I, I, I think we've always been quite open to ideas and in terms of approachability for, for the common good of the city. And I'm quite open to the idea of, uh, additional capital, uh, spend, for example, for road improvements going forward. But I would caveat that with that I think we need to be prudent, and I think officers would urge us to be prudent about spending that we haven't confirmed and spending money that we don't know one hundred percent that we have. So that's been one of the factors in the budget that we've put forward, convener. Um, that necess- that necessity rather, to be prudent and to spend only money that we've got. It would be very easy to, um, treat voters for fools and give away sweeties, which then need to be removed, uh, next year, uh, with a budget cut. So I think we've made some very difficult choices, convener, that others have, uh, shied away from. Uh, and I'll happy to take those flak and make those choices again, because there are things that we need to do to halve our balance budget, so we don't find ourselves in a situation of many councils down south who are desperately, desperately looking for support. Uh, and indeed, many councils up here who haven't maybe taken those difficult decisions in the past, convener.
Thank you for these comments. Uh, councillor Tolland is the last person to indicate, and then I think we'll move to the vote.
Thank you. Um, I mean, it, it partly reflect on, um, something that the convener had said, that, you know, I'm surprised that Labour is supporting this as well, given it will require, um, two million cuts, uh, two million pound worth of cuts in children's services. But I am actually just going to make a small point of respect. Um, I think that, you know, it took me a while to figure out who Shona was and what this cupboard was. I think you mean our Deputy First Minister, Bailey McPherson, um, who has actually had to make some extremely difficult decisions in light of a horrendous budget that did not invest in any public services. To refer to a finance minister and the Deputy First Minister as Shona who rakes in the cupboard is fairly disrespectful.
Thank you for that. And as I indicated, if we could just go to the vote, please. Councillor Creighton seems to be finding us very amusing. It's quite strange, but Willie, please.
Yes, thank you very much, convener. So the motion by yourself, convener, seconded by councillor Alexander is as circulated. The amendment by councillor Duncan, seconded by councillor Coleman, is also as circulated. Convener.
Uh, motion.
Chris Alexander.
Motion.
Chris Anderson.
Motion.
Lord Provost Campbell.
Motion.
Deputy Lord Provost Cordell.
Motion.
Bailey Dawson.
The motion.
Chris Ilnackla.
Motion.
Chris La Flynn.
That's the motion.
Chris Hunter.
Motion.
Chris Lynn.
Motion.
Bailey Roberts.
The motion.
Chris Rome.
Motion.
Chris Short.
The motion, please.
Chris Smith.
Motion.
Chris Tolland.
Motion.
Bailey Keenan.
Amendment.
Chris Crookshank.
Amendment.
Chris Finnegan.
Amendment.
Chris McHugh.
Amendment.
Chris McCurvin.
Amendment.
Chris Malone.
The amendment.
Chris Scullen.
The amendment.
Bailey Wright.
Amendment.
Bailey McPherson.
The amendment.
Chris Coleman.
The amendment.
Chris Creighton.
The amendment.
Chris Duncan.
Amendment.
Bailey Scott.
No vote.
It gives you fifteen for the motion and two for the amendment. The motion is carried currently.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, and last, but surely not least, uh, Bailey Scott, please.
Thanks, convener. I'd like to start by thanking Paul and Robert from the finance team for their help and the executive directors and other council officers that I met with while preparing my budget amendment. And I'd also like to thank the leader of the council for meeting with me at an earlier stage and for listening to my concerns. The process the administration's followed this year is very different to the way things have been done previously. Uh, opposition councillors only had sight of the SNP budget at three o'clock today, and we had twenty minutes to absorb forty six pages of detail. And I could only scan through those in, in twenty minutes. So it's made it really difficult to scrutinise in detail, and more importantly, it's denied Dundee residents and council staff the opportunity to comment on it fully in advance of the formal decision being made today. And instead, there was a raft of possible savings options, some of which you were never going to countenance, uh, but they nevertheless caused a necessary alarm, and they were put out at the start of February. Every year, I try to submit a budget amendment.
Bailey Scott, Bailey Scott, can I just correct you there? These were not, these savings you alluded to were not issued by the administration. They were leaked by an opposition councillor, and that's what's caused fear and alarm across the city. We did not issue these, so I just stand corrected there, please.
I, I didn't leak, I didn't leak them, convener, but no, did I? And I, I didn't, I didn't interrupt you while you were making your speech, so, um, I would be obliged if you didn't interrupt me as well.
Obliged if you didn't, um, say things that aren't true. The administration did not issue these post-savings, and I did not accuse you of leaking them.
Okay, well, every year I try to submit the budget. Okay, well, every year I try to submit the budget amendment despite being a single councillor. And my intention in doing that is to put forward service improvement proposals that I know are important to local residents and, and where possible alleviate some of the cuts. So I was dismayed to learn that, um, leisure and culture Dundee might close so much loved facilities. And I made provision in my, uh, uh, amendment to keep those facilities operating. Uh, and I'm look, and I'm grateful that you've done the same, Convenor, although I noticed that you're going to be consulting on their, their future rather than committing to them, uh, long term. Leisure and culture Dundee would only save eighty thousand pounds by closing Brody Ferry Castle. Uh, the, the castle is the anchor visitor attraction in Brody Ferry and contributes vastly more to the local economy than it costs to run. And with the recent improvements to Brody Ferry waterfront, it has the potential to generate so much more. And I noticed that of the options that are listed in the paper you circulated today, there isn't one that the, we should keep the status quo or the council should, um, take over operating it. The council's had a presence at Brody Castle since nineteen forty nine when it opened a cafe there. And it's had a museum there since nineteen sixty nine. So there ought to be an option that the council would take that, uh, on, especially if the options that you've listed turn out to be less favorable than the, the status quo. Uh, your decision to cut teacher numbers is inexplicable. Um, there's still so much to do to improve the educational outcomes for our young people and to close the attainment gap. Uh, especially as the Scottish Government has slashed Dundee's share of attainment challenge funding. So my, um, amendment reinstates those teacher posts. I've also made provision for two million pounds of road and pavement resurfacing and a quarter of a million for additional pothole repairs. The road asset management plan that came to committee last year made it clear that the road budget is underfunded. The design life of a road and pavement is forty years, yet the council currently resurfaces carriageways at a frequency of once in a hundred years, and it renews footways at a frequency of once in two hundred years. And that's an awfully long time to wait to have your road resurfaced. I'm frequently contacted by residents about heavily littered areas, unemptied bins, years of impacted leaves, blocked gullies and mess around euro bins, and the number of street sweeping posts needs to be increased to action these issues, and I've included a sum for that. I'm also opposed to the increase in charges for the garden waste bin and special collections for the same reason. I, I would like to reinstate the shoppers bus service from the two or six registered bus service that you cut last year. I've only included the two or six because I know the impact, uh, its loss will have. And in respect of the other subsidised registered bus services being cut, uh, the local elected members will know what impact this will have. And it's for them to speak up for them, but I'm speaking up for the bus that I know the best. The two or six takes, uh, in parts of Brody Ferry that have no other bus service. And it's the only bus that goes into the centre of Brody Ferry that includes a social housing in Fort Hill and Barnhill in its route. I previously handed in a petition to the council leader signed by many of the older people in these areas who will not only find it difficult to get to the shops, but will also have difficulty in accessing some of the warm places the council gives financial support to. I've identified a small number of additional savings, which are basically the same ones I put up every year. They're nice to have, but they're not essential, and it would in fact pay for the bus services that I want to retain. And my amendment also records my opposition to on-street parking charges in Brody Ferry, which at one stage seemed a possibility. It's clear from the Scottish budget that the S N P Scottish Government doesn't value local government. It's been left to wither while the Scottish Government has focused its attention and funds on vanity projects and the multitude of failed initiatives. The Scottish Government received a record block grant this year and the spending per person in Scotland is around twenty five percent higher compared to the rest of the UK. So just imagine what we could have done over the last seventeen years of S N P rule if we had a fair share of that. I'm not going to get a second, uh, Convenor, I don't think. But I hope that your group will agree that the issues I've highlighted do need attention and will look at doing something about them in the, the year ahead. And finally, I would ask that my amendment be recorded in a minute as per standing orders.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, I imagine you probably aren't going to get a second, but, um, councillor Alexander, I take it you're not wanting to second, Bailey Scott?
I, I am, I'm not, um, with all due respect, Bailey Scott, I won't second, but if you want to take Bailey Keenan in case he does first and then come back to me, I'm happy for you to do so, Convenor.
Bailey Keenan, or do you want second, Bailey Scott?
Do, yes, uh, because I'd hate to be true to myself. Uh, when people were asking me about the cuts that were, uh, leaked out about leisure and culture and as to whether, uh, the, the Kirk Park Golf load, uh, would close. And I had to, I had to be hon, I had to be honest with people. I had to be honest with people.
Bailey Keenan, just to clarify, you're seconding councillor Scott, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I had, when, when I was asked about the, the potential of the Kirk Park Golf close, uh, co, uh, course being closed and the loss of that facility and others within the city, I had to be honest with people that said in competing with posts in education, then the post in education would come first to me. So again, I'm going to be consistent and I'm going to vote to keep these posts in the hope that the administration would change their mind. Uh, because these are the bits that are vital to kids in Dundee. So I'll be supporting the Conservative, as I did support the Lib Dems as well. Because these teachers posts will make a difference to education and the education of our children.
Okay, thanks for that. Uh, I've got councillor Alexander, John, firstly.
Thanks very much. Can I just pick up on, on where Bailey Scott, um, started? And again, hopefully all elected members know that when I say I've got an open door policy, I, I usually live to regret that because everybody does take it up. But I, I mean it, and you know, Derek, you did, uh, meet with me in December and were very respectful and forthright in terms of just putting your views forward and I absolutely respect that and appreciate that. Um, a couple of points I wanted to pick up and you've addressed the first point, Convenor, which was we didn't put anything in the public domain to create any fear or alarm. And of course, these were not proposals from the administration, but recommendations from other, uh, spaces. So, um, just to be absolutely clear on that, we wouldn't have done that because I think for the reasons that you mentioned, Bailey Scott, um, what it does is create fear and alarm particularly amongst communities and staff unnecessarily, as the case was. Um, and, and I don't think that's helpful for anyone, but, um, we are where we are. Um, in terms of the budget savings, I think it's worthwhile also noting, um, my colleague, Kevin Cordell and I have met with the likes of Brody, Brody Ferry Traders Association. I think it's really important that we engage with, uh, the wider community, so not just through those consultation exercises. That of course, uh, also, uh, is added to the meeting that was had with the trade unions, the meeting that has been had with the cultural sector, uh, the meeting with the food network as well. The administration has been going out, meeting, discussing, engaging in a really meaningful way, and I think that's really important. Uh, I would acknowledge, I think, that budgetary processes are not ideal. Um, it's, I always find it interesting that the opposition just focus on the fact that the administration hasn't been able to give them the budget in advance yet. Um, almost every single year that I've been a councillor, which is, what, twelve years now? Um, I think there's only one year where I've seen any amendment, uh, from any of the opposition groups in advance. So we need to practise what we preach if we're going to complain about something, I suppose fundamentally is what I'm saying. Um, back to the substance of what I wanted to say, which was, um, again, on the consultation. I think it's really imperative upon all of us that we acknowledge that the outlook is not a positive one. And, uh, the soundings that are coming from the potential future UK government in terms of the, the narrative from Keir Starmer do not suggest that we're suddenly going to be awash with funding. And I think I would also reflect on the recent I F S report, which indicated that not only has austerity not stopped since two thousand and ten, uh, but it is likely to continue and have a greater, more significant, more deep rooted impact on all of the public sector services than we saw between the years of two thousand and ten, two thousand and sixteen. And don't take my word for it, take the independent I F S. Um, on the, the consultation process, I think it's really vital that we do secure these for the longer term. That is absolutely the administration's intention. I articulated that as, uh, my colleagues have in those other conversations. We need to look at all available options to secure them for the longer table. Um, if you look at the actual document, and I appreciate that you've not had as much time perhaps to, to delve into this, but it says including, it does not say that that is an exhaustive list, so there are numerous options within that. I also want to say that proactively I have been engaging with, uh, potential avenues that might help support some of these venues. And, uh, myself through my office has already secured a five-year commitment and fifty thousand pounds of support for one of those venues, which shows the proactive approach that the administration is taking to address some of these issues. So it isn't just about passing a budget and then going away and going back to normality. It absolutely laser focused on safeguarding, protecting and enhancing, uh, what we have in the city for the long term. And that is my commitment, not just to this committee, but to the entire city as well. So thank you, Convenor.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, I've got councillor Ilnackla next, Nadia.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I really just wanted to, to, to clarify something, um, and also just make a comment. Um, you know, we've said that we're increasing the children and families budget by ten percent, over ten percent. And, um, teachers are invaluable, but I think there's a little bit of disrespect to what other chi, what children need in schools in terms of school councillors, classroom assistants. They need so much more than just teachers and Audrey answered it perfectly when she gave a definition of what this means. Um, I also, I'm slightly confused because the councillor Scott, your budget did not include the half a million for cost of living crisis provision. So that's a cut of half a million to food and fuel to the most vulnerable in our community. And again, it just feels like a political football that you want to keep having this self righteous approach about teacher numbers when you don't actually care that we've increased the budget by ten, more than ten percent, which allows a lot more flexibility in what is really needed for children in our city. So I'm really, really surprised that Labour would support a cost of living crisis half a million cut.
Sorry, Nadia, you seem to have gone on to mute.
Oh, sorry, my computer's playing up. Yes, I was just really surprised that that would be the case. And I just want a clarification from, uh, Bailey Scott that actually your budget does include that half a million cut to cost of living crisis, which was mitigated and started due to the Conservative Party, which I find a full circle approach. That was all.
Well, we're not inviting questions to other councillors, but I can confirm that is the case, as you suggest. Um, so we've got councillor Lynn, please.
Yeah, uh, thanks. Kind of in the same vein as, as what councillor, uh, Ilnackla was saying. I'm, I'm not surprised to see five hundred K, uh, not included in the Conservative budget because that's what Tories are all about. They don't particularly care about poor people. I was in a food bank or actually a food larder in Stobswell in my ward, uh, two weeks ago, which receives funding from Dundee City Council to provide an absolutely invaluable service for the numerous poor people who live in the Stobswell area and come from outside the Stobswell area to access that service. I am absolutely gobsmacked that the Labour Party in twenty twenty four is going to support a Tory budget to remove five hundred thousand pounds in terms of food provision for the poorest people in our city. I mean, this is just not hyperbole, it's not rhetoric. I'm genuinely shocked. Shame on you.
Thanks for that. I think many of us share that, um, disbelief, I think. Uh, councillor Anderson.
Thank you, Convenor. Um, sorry, this is my second budget here. It's a technical question. Um, on appendix two, part of the funding to balance the budget is assumed funding for share of the sixty two point seven million expected to be included in the UK budget on the sixth of March. And that's got one point seven million in there. And I just wondered whether it's prudent of, of us to assume that we're going to get one point seven million from a budget on the sixth of March when it hasn't happened yet. So I'd just like to check with officers that what their view of that would be.
Bring on officers in a minute, but, um, I certainly wouldn't assume a prudent budget was based on something that Michael Gove had said, but maybe I'm biased. But Mister Emmett, do you have a viewpoint on, on, uh, councillor Anderson's question, please?
Thank you, Convenor. Our advice to all members has been that money is not yet confirmed and therefore we don't recommend it's formed part of the budget. It is possible it won't come through and we'll see next week what the spring budget actually goes. And if it doesn't come through, it'll leave us stretched with another one point six, seven, sorry, one point seven million having to find fund balances, Convenor. So that's the same advice we've given to everybody.
Thank you for that, Mister Emmett. I think councillor Anderson, you might find it's an extension of Throsonomics. Um, councillor Malone.
Thank you, Convenor. There's been a lot of shit saying going on and predicting what's going to happen in the future when, uh, vice versa. Uh, councillor Alexander's already written the Labour Party manifesto. I'd like to see his copy of it to show we are going to be, where we are going to be making all these cuts that he predicts. Um, I kind of, uh, can, uh, councillor Lynn was going to tell us how he works in food banks. Many, many Labour councillors, including myself, work with food banks and food larders to try and mitigate the poverty that we see on a daily basis. And we can't hide from that. We've got, we've all got a role in this to try and prevent the worst excesses of it. But I would be a hypocrite. And I think somebody used that word to myself. And I'm not saying that anybody else is a hypocrite, but to my own values, my own beliefs. I can't vote, I can't complain or contest Tory austerity, Tory cuts, and then vote for an amendment, uh, on the basis that we're looking at the Scottish Conservative cuts, a Scottish Labour cuts. I just don't see how personally I can make that judgment. Um, I can't complain about Tory cuts at Westminster. I complain about cuts in Dundee, uh, without making myself appear to be a hypocrite. I understand where my colleagues are coming from, but I can't support a motion that basically says, you know, that, that, that sickens a Tory emotion when the Tories and this is not, this is a blatant party political point, are wrecking the economy nationally, not just here, they're wrecking the economy. And not only the economy, what we're seeing is a government that has led to, I think, the biggest civil unrest and the civil challenges, the challenges to all ourselves is, and I just think I, 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 I won't be a hypocrite to myself. I understand it. But I won't be supporting, uh, councillor Scott's amendment.
Okay, thank you, Charlie, for your contribution. Um, good to, uh, councillor Tolland, Siobhan, and you'll be the last speaker and then we'll go to the vote, please.
Thank you. Um, councillor Malone, thank you for that, um, because I think that's a, a brave thing to do. Um, there has been a lot of talk about education. Um, and I am absolutely floored that the Labour Party leader would support an amendment that takes away five hundred thousand pounds in terms of food. In terms of food, um, I, you know, with all due respect, hungry kids do not learn. So we can put teachers, as you keep saying, but when they're hungry and they have no access to the food that a Conservative Party amendment would take away from them, then we really are in desperate states. I am, I, 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 I know it's been said twice before by various councillors, but I think it is worth repeating. I cannot believe that the leader of the Labour Group would support an amendment that takes away half a million pound for food. It was only a couple of weeks ago, one of the Labour councillors was celebrating all these volunteers, that all this work, that that money funds, by the way, that that money funds, hungry kids cannot learn. So for all the rhetoric, here we are in a situation that for the sake of being anti S N P, that the Labour Group have found themselves in a situation where they're supporting an amendment that will take away food from hungry people. I, 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 I just cannot quite believe it.
Yes, thanks, Siobhan. Charlie, I'm.
Can you add a point? It's just a point of clarification, uh, about some of the comments that Siobhan's made. Um, the Labour Group has never, ever thought to induce hunger. We've not been in power since two thousand and seven. We haven't administered, we haven't stood over.
Charlie, to be fair, these aren't really points of qualification, so.
No, 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 points, uh, uh, councillor Siobhan, uh, Tolland said that we are voting to take that away. Uh, and, and that's a disgrace. Um, poverty is primarily at the heart of everything Labour stands for. And so, I, I. for. And so I think she, I think she, I understand why she's doing it. I think it's political. But I'm not taking any lessons from governments that have induced.
Charlie, I think, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for that. If we could just go to the vote, please.
Okay, thank you, convener. So the motion by yourself, convener, seconded by councillor Alexander, is as circulated. The amendment by Bailey Scott, seconded by Bailey Keenan, is also circulated. Convener?
Motion.
Councillor Alexander?
Motion.
Councillor Anderson?
Motion.
Lord Provost Campbell?
Motion.
Deputy Lord Provost Cardell?
Motion.
Bailey Dawson?
The motion.
Mr El Nakla?
Motion.
Mr Flynn?
The motion.
Mr Hunter?
Motion.
Mr Lynn?
Motion.
Bailey Roberts?
Motion.
Mr Rome?
The motion.
Mr Short?
The motion, please.
Mr Smith?
Motion.
Mr Tolland? Mr Tolland?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Motion.
Yeah, thank you. Bailey Keenan?
No vote.
Mr Cookshank?
No vote.
Mr Finnegan?
No vote.
Mr McHugh?
No vote.
Mr McIrvin?
No vote.
Mr Malone? Mr Malone? I'll come back to Mr Malone. Mr Scullen?
No, no, it's no vote, my.
Okay, thank you very much. Noted. Mr Scullen?
No vote.
Bailey Wright?
No vote.
Bailey McPherson?
No vote.
Councillor Coleman?
No vote.
Councillor Creighton?
No vote.
Councillor Duncan?
No vote.
Bailey Scott?
Amendment.
Okay, thank you very much. That gives you 15 for the motion and one for the amendment the motion's carried.
Well, thank you all for attending the meeting. Sure, Bailey Scott, you were getting a wee bit excited there that you were going to get a big raft of support, but a Labour promise to second a motion only seems to last about 10 minutes. So anyway, thank you all for attendance.
Thank you, bye.
Thank you, bye. Thanks, bye. Bye, everyone.